Sorry, it's on? Yes, it's on. Yeah. May I have City Clerk to take roll call, please?
Councilmember Bridgum.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Dovin.
Present.
Councilmember Klaffenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Winn Pinalosa.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Tran.
Here.
And Mayor Jones is absent tonight.
Okay, so after the roll call, I would like to have Assistant City Manager Matt West to say the invocation, and Councilmember John O'Neil will do the list of the flags.
Thank you. Please prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear Lord, be with us this evening to empower and enrich us that we might always seek what is best for our community and all concerned. We ask for your blessing as we begin a new year, and that 2024 is a year full of prosperity, abundance, success, and good fortune for all. Lord, we also ask that you be with and provide strength to those who have recently lost loved ones, and to bless those who have welcomed new family and friends. We ask this in your name. Amen. Please join me in our pledge of the greatest symbol of freedom in the world. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May be seated.
So tonight, we have two community spotlight on the agenda. City Clerk, would you please read the community's spotlight title?
Item 1A is Community Spotlight in Recognition of Nancy Caruso, founder of Get Inspired, for her ocean conservation and restoration efforts in Orange County. And Matt West, Assistant City Manager, will give that spotlight tonight.
Thank you. Tonight, the Garden Grove City Council would like to recognize marine biologist and founder of the nonprofit Get Inspired, Nancy Caruso, for her ocean conservation and restoration efforts in Orange County. I'd like to invite Nancy Caruso up, please. Nancy, a longtime resident of West Garden Grove, funded the nonprofit organization Get Inspired in 2009, with the mission to inspire stewardship and curiosity for the natural world through the exploration of science. One of the many programs she leads is the Orange County Ocean Restoration Project. Introduced in 2002, the project aims to restore the kelp forest ecosystem by involving the community. Within 10 years of starting the Orange County Ocean Restoration Project, Nancy and community volunteers successfully restored Orange County's kelp forest, which had previously disappeared. Nancy accomplished this by teaching students how to grow kelp across 45 schools in Orange County, including six in Garden Grove, and training volunteer divers to plant kelp underwater. To this day, she has taught more than 13,000 students to grow kelp, green abalone, and white sea bass in their classrooms, and trained over 450 volunteers on restoration efforts along Orange County beaches and underwater. When asked what she enjoys most about her conservation and restoration efforts, Nancy said, "I enjoy working with the community to solve environmental problems." Nancy continues to release white sea bass from classrooms every December and June in Huntington Harbor, and she hopes to release the green abalone she has been growing in schools for the last seven years. On the horizon for Get Inspired is restoring the beloved pismo clams to the beaches of Huntington, Newport, and Sunset, making them the first to reproduce in the world. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present Nancy Caruso with a certificate and memento of recognition for her ocean conservation and restoration efforts in Orange County. Congratulations.
Just in case any of you don't know what those things are. This is an agalo michel, and this is what kelp looks like we have now in Orange County, thanks to all the kids and volunteers that helped to grow it. I wanted you all to see what that looks like. This is probably a 40-year-old abalone. Yeah. And you can buy them in H mark still, Garden Grove. They're farm-raised, so you can still eat them, but they're, just so you know, they are farm-raised now. Okay.
We're gonna get a photo first, and then you could say a little bit more out there. Hold it.
There you go. Abalone.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, oh, sure. I'll take that.
That's my husband, Tom. Both Garden, West Garden Grove residents for the last 25 years. So, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Cindy Tran, distinguished members of our community, the Police Department, thank you so much for your service, and thank you to city council members for this honor. I appreciate it very much. It's been a dream to be a marine biologist since I was 10 years old, when I was inspired by my fourth-grade teacher, Mrs. May. And I've tirelessly worked on that goal my whole life. There's very few jobs in marine biology, and it doesn't pay very well, and we just don't value the ocean enough quite yet. And I know this firsthand. You might be surprised to learn that our state is still very slow on progress to protect and conserve our coast. Did you know that in just two minutes, you can get online, and for $61.52, you can buy a fishing license to take from the ocean every single day? But there still isn't a pathway for people like me to do restoration in the ocean. It just isn't part of our culture yet to want to restore things. You would think in California that that would not be the case. Over the last 22 years, I've taught 15,000 kids to restore the kelp. So they say, "How is our kelp doing?" When I see them on the streets and in the grocery stores of Garden Grove, at schools like Santiago and Pacifica, Bell, Lake, Ralston, all in Garden Grove, who, students, thousands of students who participated in this project to help me grow these species, and the 600 volunteers who helped me plant them in the ocean. I've had to fight, actually, to do this work in California, and that's where there really isn't any other people who do it. There aren't any other people who do restoration in the ocean. So, I had to get seven permits, for example, to plant the kelp in the ocean along the Orange County coast, including from the State Lands Commission. I had to lease the land from the state to plant the kelp on. The last time I asked for permission to plant the abalone, it took me three years to get a permit. And I was told by the Director of the Department of Fish and Wildlife that it was the groundswell of public support that I had, from students and citizens writing letters and calling their representatives and asking for help from the community to support the project that actually got the permits passed. So, I'm about to ask for permission to plant 6,000 green abalone along our coast, and I hope that I can come back to my city council here in Garden Grove and ask for your support in getting that groundswell of public support again to help with the permits to get that done. There's students right now, I just delivered abalone today, to several classrooms here in Orange County, so they're helping me still to grow these species and learn about them every day in their classrooms, so that they can become stewards for our oceans. And I hope that I can count on you, and all of you, to help support those initiatives in the future. And I'll be back. Thank you so much for the honor, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you very much for sharing that. And I'm not sure if our city could see, in the room, we have the officer here in his soft uniform and ready for the next spotlight, so please go for it.
Item 1B is Community Spotlight in Recognition of the Garden Grove Police Department's Special Resources Team for their continued efforts in addressing homelessness, and Mr. West will give that community spotlight.
Thank you. So next, the Garden Grove City Council would like to recognize the Garden Grove Police Department's Special Resource Team, or more commonly referred to as CERT, for their continued efforts in addressing homelessness. So at this time, I'd like to invite up the seven members of the CERT team. So with Sergeant Jeff Brown, Master Officer Steve Ortiz, Master Officer Chris Shelgren, Officer James Blum, Officer Troy Bowman, Officer Hector Ferreira, and Officer Jesse Lucatero. The Garden Grove Police Department's Special Resource Team is a homeless task force comprised of specially-trained police officers serving the homeless community in Garden Grove. Since its formation in 2016, CERT has expanded to seven full-time police officers. The CERT officers receive additional training in communication, de-escalation, and mental health. The mission of CERT is to provide a safe and secure community while offering services and outreach to assist the homeless population. CERT also collaborates with the Be Well OC in Garden Grove Mobile Response Team to assess and stabilize individuals experiencing substance abuse, psychological crisis, and homelessness. Through Orange County's first street medicine program in Garden Grove, this, CERT works alongside Health Care in Action to provide health care and other services to unhoused individuals through a street medicine model. For health and safety reasons, CERT and the city's Public Works Ride-A-Way staff cleaned and removed 511 homeless encampments in 2023. Together, they have made noticeable improvements in keeping our city clean while staying focused on finding solutions. In 2022, CERT alongside the city's Office of Economic Development and Caltrans began the Caltrans Fencing Improvement Project to install deterrence fencing and landscaping to beautify and secure identified encampment areas along the Garden Grove 22 Freeway Underpass. Last week, the project broke ground with the installation of the fencing. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present the Garden Grove Police Department Special Resource Team with certificates of recognition for their dedication and efforts in addressing homelessness. Congratulations.
I'll try to make this brief. On behalf of the Special Resource Team, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council, our sincerest thank you for this honor. The team is extremely humbled to be recognized in this way. We'd like to express our thank you to all of you, as well as City Manager Lisa Kim, for her support and collaboration with our team on a daily basis. We'd really like to thank Chief Amir Al Farah for his undying support in our unit, his belief in all of us. And we'd also like to really thank our collaborative teams with the city, at Public Works, Raul Levas team, who helps us clean all those encampments on a daily basis, Unbelievable Team, and our team with Economic Development, Monica, Tim, and Kristy, who we wouldn't be able to do our jobs without them. So, again, we're humbled. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. So, I, the next part is the oral communication. I have some of the card here. I would like to invite Claire Bisop. Are you here?
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the Medal of Honor Trail that we have in Garden Grove. I don't know how many of you have walked on it, or you're all familiar with it. I just discovered it myself, and I love it for walking, so you don't have to be in the street. But anyways, I'm here to ask for some further care of that trail. It's, it's in pretty bad shape. Every day that I walk it, I see a lot of trash along the Medal of Honor Trail, and there's mostly weeds growing. So, I mean, the potential to have it be a beautiful corridor is great, if, with some, like, wildflower seeding, or bushes, or whatever. The trees are wonderful, but I feel like, if we're going to name it the Medal of Honor Trail, and you stop and you read the plaque for those three very brave former residents of Garden Grove, that if it's going to be their trail, I think that we need to make it beautiful. So I am here to ask for more effort and resources to be put into that trail. Okay? That's my message. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment, just so you're aware, that's actually on the agenda tonight, and so that'll be covered.
Maryam Dalawar.
Sorry. Hello, I hope everyone's enjoying themselves today. I'm Maryam Dalawar, Hub Coordinator with Sunrise Movement OC, and a lifelong resident of Garden Grove Second District. As you probably already know, the Sunrise Movement is a youth environmental organization trying to save the planet from climate change while also improving the economy. As someone who's 15 and too young to drive, I rely on other modes of transportation to go to places when my parents are busy, like biking. However, it's really hard to get around the city on a bike, since it's too dangerous driving next to cars, and we don't really have good bike infrastructure. We have taken the first steps by making bike lanes on some major streets, and I think you very much for that. But I should be able, and I should be able to use public transportation, like taking the bus, but the reason why I don't really use it is, why I don't really take the bus, is because there are usually unhoused residents or on bus stops. Not all the bus stops, obviously, but enough that my parents don't feel that safe with me going alone. And now, this may seem like a pretty complicated problem, but there is one solution that will work to solve biking problems, public transit issues, and homelessness in the city. So, a legally binded climate action and adaptation plan, or a CAP, is something the city can implement to stop climate change and boost the local economy and support local businesses. A CAP is a way for us to upgrade our infrastructure and make it more environmentally friendly, such as having protected bike lanes on major streets and making all the buildings in the city run on clean energy, and also create thousands of good union jobs. There would also be an adaptation aspect to the plan, and this could include changing up zoning laws to allow for denser housing, obviously not like those high rises or skyscrapers, as those are not in the character of the city, but having mixed-use areas with low-income housing will support local business owners, help homeless residents find a place to live, and also meet the housing goals imposed by the state. And if you think about it, by freeing up more land, we can build more parks and plant more trees that will beautify the city, and in turn, make Garden Grove an even better place to raise a family and improve our quality of life. And I know you're probably thinking that this is gonna cost a lot of money, but, yeah, it is gonna cost a considerable amount, but, probably not as much as you would think, since the state and federal government have, has, the state and federal government have over $369 billion, not million, but billion dollars, that they've allocated for climate action, and the city can tap into that, into those, into that, into that funding, and they can use it for local projects, like making protected bike lanes, planting more trees, and retrofitting buildings. Sunrise Movement OC really wants to help out in any way possible to try to get a legally binding climate action adaptation plan soon, and we'd love to meet with you to discuss any way we can assist. Thank you so much, and have a great evening.
Lisa Bonderchuk. Yeah, how did you say?
Bonderchuk, it's Ukrainian. Good evening, Garden Grove Councilmembers and Mayor. My name is Lisa Bonderchuk, a member of Sunrise OC. First and foremost, I would like to thank the city for implementing incredible bike lanes, promoting sustainability and safe transportation of the city of Garden Grove, and I hope that will continue. But I am mainly here to speak on the benefits of implementing a climate action plan, a CAP, for our city. Such a plan is essential for not only protecting our environment, but also fostering economic growth, creating jobs, and ensuring the well-being of Garden Grove families, since after all this, since after all, this is the fifth-largest city in Orange County. Implementing a CAP will drive economic prosperity by promoting the adoption of renewable energy, sources of energy-efficient technologies. This will create new jobs, opportunities in sectors like renewable energy installations and green construction, boosting our local economy and attracting new businesses. One other key benefit of implementing a CAP is the promotion of renewable energy sources. Transitioning to renewable energies such as solar and wind power will not only reduce our carbon footprint, but also release new job opportunities to the renewable job sector. Moreover, a CAP will improve the quality of life for Garden Grove residents by reducing air pollution, enhancing public health, and providing cleaner transportation options. Additionally, investing in climate adaptation measures will help protect our community from increasingly severe impacts of climate change, safeguarding our homes and natural resources. I urge the city of Garden Grove to prioritize the development and implementation of a comprehensive climate action and adaptation plan. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Tiffany Nguyen.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name's Tiffany Nguyen, and I've been a resident here at Garden Grove for over 20 years, and I'm also part of Sunrise Movement OC with Lisa and Maryam. We are urging Garden Grove City Council to develop a legally binding comprehensive action plan, and that plan should include the following. Garden Grove should join the Orange County Power Authority, helping us shift to 100% renewable energy. By joining the OCPA, Garden Grove residents will be empowered to choose where their energy comes from. One plan offers a 44% renewable energy choice that is cheaper than Southern California Edison's rate, and another plan offers the choice to opt-in for 100% renewable energy. As a resident here of Garden Grove, and I'm sure many other residents would also be interested, we would appreciate having that choice in Garden Grove. The second aspect of a climate action plan that we'd like to implement is that Garden Grove invests more in efficient public transportation, EV infrastructure, and complete streets. Doing so will reduce air pollution, reduce congestion on the roads, that I'm sure many of you felt today coming here, improve community health by encouraging walking, and make spaces more accessible for people who aren't able to drive. We appreciate the bike lanes that have been made, but we need a more cohesive transit system that is safer for folks to use. And the third aspect, we'd like Garden Grove to provide a comprehensive timeline for monitoring and reporting funds to achieve a net zero carbon emissions by 2030. Despite an environmental justice portion that is present in the city's general plan, we did not find any clear funding towards this policy, and we want to see funding for climate projects to be explicit in the city's financial reports. The state is currently offering various grants to fund climate projects in cities, and we believe this is a great economic opportunity for Garden Grove. At the end of the day, Sunrise Movement OC wants to create local jobs, reduce pollution, and improve the quality of life for families here in Garden Grove, and councilmembers who support local legally binding climate action plan are supporting generations to come and have our vote in the upcoming election. I have roots in this city, and I would love to see it change for the better, so please do not miss this opportunity to let Garden Grove become a leader in Orange County. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it, all the pink card I have. Is there anyone else would like to address the council that didn't get a chance to speak? I see none, so that's it, the close-up the oral communication. We're gonna pass it to Councilmember John O'Neil for the successor agency meeting.
Thank you. At this time, we will call roll and call to order the successor agency community development meeting for Tuesday, February 13th.
Member Bridgum.
Here.
Member Tran.
Here.
Member Dovin.
Present.
Member Klaffenstein.
Here.
Member Winn Pinalosa.
Here.
Vice Chair O'Neil.
Here.
And Chair Jones is absent tonight.
Thank you very much. We've already held communications on the town seat with council, light agenda tonight, we just have a consent calendar. Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Let's call for the vote on that.
Motion received. Six yes votes.
Any matters from agency members? No? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn that meeting till the next regular meeting of February 23rd here in this room, and I'll go back to council.
Thank you. Next part is the consent calendar. Anyone would like to pull an item from the consent calendar?
Move to approve.
Motion received. Six yes votes.
Okay, the next part is the public hearing.
Item 4A is a public hearing, it's adoption of resolutions for approval of a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, general plan amendment number GPA 01, 2023, site plan number SP 127, 2023, and tentative track map number TT 19273 for a 30-unit residential townhome project, and the introduction and first reading of an ordinance approving zoning amendment number A 036 2024, entitled An Ordinance of the City Council, the city of Garden Grove, approving zoning amendment, I'm sorry, A 036 2023. Approving zoning amendment number A 36 2023 to amend the city's official zoning map to change the zoning designation of properties located at 13252 Brookhurst Street and 10052 Central Avenue, and identified as assessor's parcel numbers 09903101, 09903102, 09903108, and 09903109, from C1 Neighborhood Commercial, and R2 Limited Multiple Residential 2, R3 Multiple Family Residential. Okay. And Ms. Long is here to give that report.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Tran, and members of the city council. For your consideration today is a recommendation from the Planning Commission for city council approval of land use actions necessary for a 30-unit residential townhome project, which includes three affordable units on a 1.22-acre site located at 13252 Brookhurst Street and 10052 Central Avenue, as known as the former Mary calendar site. The project's having designed pursuant to the state density bonus law, which qualifies the project for a density bonus, reduce parking ratios, and concession and waivers. The subject site currently consists of two different general plan land use designations, light commercial, which is in pink, and low-medium density residential, which is in light yellow. A general plan amendment is request to change the land use designation of the entire site to medium density residential for the townhome projects. Similarly, the site currently consists of two different zones, commercial, C1, and limited multifamily residential, R2. The request zone change to multifamily residential, R3, is necessary to implement the new land use designations and to facilitate the construction of the proposed townhome developments. The projects include a total of 30 attached units, and it has been designed to comply with the parking requirements of the state density bonus law. Under this law, the project is required to provide a minimum of 53 parking spaces. The project will provide a total of 64 spaces that include two car garages for each unit and four open guest parking spaces, which exceed the state requirement by 11 spaces. The site will be oriented toward and accessible from Central Avenue. A U-shaped vehicular drive aisle and pedestrian walkway will circulate throughout the site. Also, the project will provide an approximately 3,200 square foot common recreational open area equipped with different type amenities, including barbecue tables, community gardens, and dock stations. So with the inclusion of the three affordable units, the project is entitled to concession and waivers. The applicant is requesting one concession and five waivers to facilitate the proposed projects, and the top, the table on the screen is showing the concession and waivers requested by the applicant, which include common space amenity with the active open space. while high in the front setback along Brookhurst Street, depth of the landscape area along Brookhurst Street, and private open space encroachment into the front setback. The project will provide 22 two-bedroom units and eight four-bedroom units with three different types of floor plan ranging from 1,300 to 1,900 square feet. The proposed development will incorporate a modern contemporary architectural style with a variety of exterior finishes, including stucco exteriors, stone veneer, wood siding, decorative guardrails, different roof lines, and articulation to the building massing. The building color will be generally white and warm gray, which will complement the surrounding neighborhood. As shown on screen, the site currently consists of four separate parcels. A tentative track map approval is necessary to consolidate the parcel into one single lot for the purpose of selling each townhome as a condo unit. The proposed tentative track map is in conformance with the zoning requirement for the site as well as the city subdivision ordinance and the state subdivision map act. For this project, the city, through an environmental consultant, had prepared an initial study report and mitigated negative declarations to analyze environmental impacts of the projects. The report conclude that the project will have no or less than significant impacts on the all relevant environmental factors, providing specific mitigation measures are incorporated. These measures are included in the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, and the applicant will be required to implement the mitigation measures throughout the construction of the projects. Further recommendations, staff recommends that the city council conduct a public hearings, adopt a resolutions adopting mitigated negative declarations, and associate mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program for the projects, adopt a resolutions approving the request general plan amendment, introduce and conduct the first reading of an ordinance approving the request zoning amendment, and adopt a resolution approving the request site plan and tentative track map subject to the recommended conditional approval. That concludes the staff report, and we are available for questions. In the audience, we had Chad Brown, the projects applicant, with Rene Escario, the environmental consultant, along with the traffic engineer, also available to answer any question related to the projects.
Thank you. Do we have any question from the council?
Hi, Hung. Thanks for your presentation. I know you've worked hard to bring this to a public hearing and a vote. This property I had specifically addressed for fencing and cleanup. So I want to remind the property owners to properly maintain it while we go through the process. Because I've had complaints from neighbors in the area directly affected by their development. So I want to be on the record to reflect that there are complaints, and I want the public hearing process to be open and fair. And I will vote for a public hearing, and I invite the public, especially people who are affected in the neighborhood, other property owners as well as residents is there. It is my district four, so I'm particularly interested in how they develop it. And until we have full approval, I want them to properly maintain the property fenced and have to refer to our SRT teams if we need to, to make sure that we don't have a fire there again, which is what started this project that burned down the Marie Callender on-site there. So we are watching very closely this project. I only want to know if it's been through planning commission, if they voted it up or down, and when the public hearing will happen, so the public will have an opportunity weigh in on this development before we are final approval for development. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I just had one question. You showed on the slide, I think it was 64 parking spaces required by the state law under the density bonus provisions. What is the allocated number without density provisions for a project of this size? I think that's of concern when we have probably over 100 people moving into a small area that used to be a restaurant, and, you know, that's going to directly impact the neighborhood if we don't have adequate parking. I get that under the density bonus laws, we have to basically go along with it. But I'm just curious at what, what impact this is going to have beyond that. So I know 64 under the density bonus, but what would it be without a density bonus?
Thank you for the question, and I'll try to answer that. We did do a little analysis before this meeting regarding if there was not affordable units, what the parking requirement would be if we were just using our code, and it would require 89 parking spaces. So it was actually 53 spaces that would be permitted utilizing state density bonus, and they're providing 11 more than the bare minimum that would be required for the state for this project.
And I know when I was on the planning commission, we used to have a workaround on some of this to kind of ease the problems to the neighborhood, where we would make it a condition of approval to have it implied in the CCNRs that the garages are used for parking. What traditionally happens is people store a bunch of stuff in their, in their garages, and then they're parking out on the neighborhood streets and the adjoining streets. Doing that, because kind of without that provision, this is a lot less than 53 spaces, because quite frankly, at least half of them are going to fill their garages up with stuff, and everybody's going to be parking on that streets, the adjacent streets. So I know prior planning commissions had done that, and I want to know was that done in this project?
We have a condition, the conditional approval required that the garage is for store vehicle, but not, not to be converted into a living area.
But nothing that says they have to park their cars there?
That's our, you know, condition of, the standard conditional approval that we have in the past for similar housing projects.
So I'm confused. What's the answer? Is it, is it, is it in the CC, is that a condition of approval, or is it not?
It is the conditional approval for the storage of the vehicle, but not in the CCNR requirement.
I think that would be a good, because then the neighbors that live there can police themselves, and the city doesn't have to get that involved with it. And it doesn't make the community have to deal with hundreds of cars parking in their neighborhood that didn't used to be there.
And thank you for that, Councilmember Bredegum. We'll look up the exact condition of approval, and then we may also want to ask the applicant. It is fairly standard these days for, for homeowners associations to have that condition in their CCNRs, even if we're not requiring it. But we can double-check with the applicant, and we'll look for the condition as well.
If we don't, I mean, if we approve this, it goes forward without that condition, period. So my, my suggestion is we approve it and make that condition now. And I think Councilman Jovan, he's, he's the one that's going to have the most to lose here, because he's got to deal with all the complaints. So I think if we made that added condition to our motion, then we don't have to set this back. We can just go forward with it and, and address the potential community concerns that could come out of it.
And if I may, I did find that condition. It's that all units shall maintain the ability to park two cars within the garages at all times, unless otherwise permitted by state law, garages shall not be converted to any other use. Yeah, and that is the, that is a condition of approval under the preparation of the CCNRs. So we misspoke earlier. It is in there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for bringing that up, because that's exactly the same concern that I have. I have so many of my residents just talking about not having enough parking. And when we did the review, I did ask our staff and city manager to look into that. So thank you for giving me the information. Do we have any other question from the council?
Yeah.
Oh, no? Okay, so I guess we close the public hearing and ask for most?
No, you need to open, open the public.
Open the public.
I've been waiting to make comments, because you have to open first.
Good evening. My name is Chad Brown. I'm with Malia Holmes. I'm vice president of planning and development for us. I am not able to put together a PowerPoint presentation for you, but I do have handouts and one for the record as well that is from a PowerPoint presentation I did. It points a couple of the beautiful pictures of what we are putting forward, and it also shows you what that site has looked like recently, if you don't mind. I'll deliver one to the city clerk as well, and for staff.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And, and Councilman Bredegum, I do want to get to some of your comments about the site, as well as Councilman Dovin, with you as well regarding some of the community input and so forth that we did go through with this project to begin with. But as you know, and as, as staff has presented, this project is the former Marie Callender site, as well as a vacant site that is directly adjacent to it. We, as Malia Holmes, have been engaged with the property owners of the Marie Callenders and the other site for nearly two and a half years now at this point. So I'm very happy to be in front of you tonight on the positive recommendation that the planning commission provided to us on December 7th for this project, after a thorough review. But also, I do consider this site in its current condition, and especially before the building was removed from, from the site, that it was a blighted portion and a very important corner, so to speak, in, along the Brookhurst corridor. We negotiated with the property owner as a result of the second fire that took place, and Malia Holmes was responsible to basically take the lead in removing the Marie Callenders building from the site at risk of this application being approved and/or moving forward. I did work with members of your team that were here earlier about helping to remove the homeless and their cats that they had on the site from the, from the properties during that period. So we understand the value of that, and, and we want to be a good, a good neighbor with it. We will only move through and purchase the property. Our purchase is obviously contingent upon approval from the city council of the map and the development plan moving forward. Otherwise, I really can't answer what the, what the restaurant owners, the baseline property owners of that property would do with the property if we don't move forward. But we, as Malia Holmes, have a good track record with the City of Garden Grove. We developed, you may recall, some of you may have been involved in it, the project over on Brookhurst and 11th Street. There was a care facility over there on about the same acre size. It was a 31-unit project we called Brea. It was located on 11th Street. Different zoning regulations for the R3 were in place at the time, but that project received nothing but praise from members of the city staff, as well as from the community, and it sold very well and was very well received. If you're not familiar with it, it's just west of the intersection of Brookhurst on 11th Street, and it's called the Brea Community. I'll remind you, as staff pointed out, that the planning commission did unanimously approve this project on December 7th, and I do ask for your approval tonight. The PC, the planning commission, did appreciate, there was a lot of discussion about the community input and the community meetings that we held. Not only did we hold a community meeting on, I think it was in September or July. I don't recall exactly off the top of my head at this point. But we held a community meeting here in the community center. We had one family show up, and they were for, they were from about approximately a block and a half away. Their concern was addressed to parking and the overflow and so forth, but we were able to explain to them that the, there will be a homeowners association in place to ensure that garages are maintained for parking of vehicles and not for storage or conversion. In addition, they were supportive of the redevelopment of the site from the community aspect. I was surprised that more people didn't show up to that meeting. It was very well advertised. And again, there was only one couple that, that came into the meeting. The, the addressing of the, the parking in the garage and so forth, we, we accept that condition. We've reviewed the conditions of approval and do accept, as they've been recommended by staff. And I'm ready to answer any questions you may have. If you have a chance to go through the packet that was distributed to you, it provides a little bit of perspective of what the site looked like in the past, as well as present. There's a perspective of what Brookhurst Street frontage is intended to look like upon approval and development of this, as well as about halfway through is the Brea project that I referenced, as to how that project came out over on 11th Street that was very well received. There's also detail in here, Councilman Dovin, regarding the community input and the community letters that went out. So again, with this, there's been a, it's been a long road to get here before you tonight, but I do ask for your approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just a question since you're there. Just to recap, the smaller units are about 1,300 square feet plus for living space.
Correct.
And over 400 square feet for a garage, 430 and 450, something like that.
Yes.
And that, so that's a good-sized two-car garage. And also, the four-bedroom is close to 2,000 square foot living space with another 450 garage, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I like the project. I think it'll be an improvement there. I'm always concerned, because I served on the planning commission like George did and Joe Dovin. Parking is always our issue in Garden Grove, and we have to make sure that people use those garages for parking, because if this all overflowed on the street, it would just be a nightmare. So I'm happy to hear that the CCNRs and, and hopefully the neighborhood will police itself. So I'm, I'm in, I'm in favor of the project, so thank you very much.
Yeah, if I, if I may respond, it's that each of the units has a two-car attached garage with direct access to it for all the units. And I would also point out that the larger units, the, there's eight of the four-bedroom units, but that is only eight of the 30. The 20, the balance, 22 of the units are only a two-bedroom unit.
Right.
And, and it's really for that. We have concerns regarding parking as well as a livability and marketing of the home. Many homeowners are very savvy about where am I going to park and so forth, and that is a part of their buying experience. So we have a concern with that as well. If I might add a little commentary with, it's in regards to your regulations that have caused this project to necessarily stretch down and have to ask for some of these deviations in order to meet the density that the R3 zone even comes close to permitting. The maximum density in your R3 zone is 32 units to the acre. I think this project is at 24, and we're still asking for those deviations. So there's a bit of this given push that's going on between the state density bonus levels and, and regulations, when you have open space and parking spaces and circulation and, and activity areas, all competing for space on a site, it gets very difficult. While we are trying to maintain a, a very beautiful, well-designed, and livable community, and I do think that's what we have here with the interior communities, or interior amenity set that's in the Paseo areas that's being put forward tonight. So thank you for the question.
Thank you. I don't have questions, I have comments. Please feel free to sit down if you don't have to stand there while I speak. First and foremost, I want to thank staff for all your hard work, and thank you to those that are here on behalf of the project. I'm very excited to see this happen. I think my only comment to the city manager was that I wish it was happening in my district. Most of my developments are very rundown, and I think having the four, oh, sorry, are we still going with public hearing? Okay, I will.
We're still in the public hearing, but yeah, we'll call you up in a minute. Yeah, thank you.
Should I let him speak first? Yeah, you can go ahead. I'll, I'll finish when you're finished.
As you know, I'm constantly here talking about sewer pipes that are all between 60 and 80 years old. We have 300 miles of them. The reason I bring them up in this situation is because one of the ways we can pay for this $2 billion problem is with more density. And so this kind of project, I think, is gonna, it's gonna help. In, in other words, if you guys could put the problem on paper, if we could have this $2 billion problem on part of the budget, when you guys get a phone call about this project, and you're going to have a neighbor that says, "Hey, why did you approve this?", you'll have an answer. You'll be able to say, "Look, we need more people to pay for a $2 billion problem." But as it stands right now, this sewer pipe issue is a secret. I'm up here doing Mr. Murray's job. I don't know why. He's not doing it. I'm not good at it. I don't claim to be good at it. But I do know those sewer pipes are continuing to age. We had an earthquake last week. It probably cost us $10 million in broken sewer pipes. It probably cost us $10 million in broken sewer pipes. And we know that when they get 50 years old, because he told us last week, they start to fail. We now have them at 60 to 80 years old. I'm only suggesting, please, let's put these pipes on the budget so that they never reach 80. We have a plan. And now we have this kind of a thing. And last week, we turned down Acadia, at least temporarily, because you don't have an answer. Somebody calls and says, "Why do we have an addiction program here?" If we had it on the budget, we'd have an answer to that problem. As it stands, Acadia's shut down. That corner is useless. I don't know how we're going to pay for our sewer pipes. So please approve this project. And please get serious about the sewer pipes. Thank you for your time.
Hey, can I continue? Yeah. Back to me, okay. I was saying that I wish it was in my district. A lot of the existing housing in District 6 are not as nice as this. And I was really depressed when I heard that the garage is 400 square feet, because I just realized my condo is only 548 square feet. So that was great. But what I really want to say is that we don't particularly have a parking problem, we have a housing problem. So by building more housing, we're allowing for people who are doubled and tripled up to no longer be doubled and tripled up, which would alleviate parking in our city. And I think if we're going to continue to have parking issues in that specific neighborhood, which I'm very familiar with because I frequent the Enterprise and the Hertz rental car place there, I have to park on the street and I know that there's a parking issue, is that the residents are not parking in their garages. They're parking on the street because they're using their garages for whatever they're using it for. So I don't want to knock this project before it's off the ground. I believe that the intent of the project is there, that the parking is reasonable, and that the individuals who will be purchasing or renting or looking to live here will be cognizant of the fact that there's two parking spots available. And so I just want to highlight that, that in order to really address the issues that we have in the city, we need to continue to build housing. We need to continue to allocate affordable units. And this is a great path to do that. And so I'm really excited for this project. It looks beautiful. Wish I was living there. All the new builds have me really jealous, so you'll always hear me make comments like that. But I'm just really excited and thank you, staff, for being so forward-thinking in how we're building housing, because as much as I would love to have a single-family home, that is not the first path for a lot of younger people like myself. We're renting condos or purchasing condos first before single-family homes, and some of us never will, just because of how expensive everything is and interest rates now. And so diversifying our housing stock is the best way to go, and I'm really excited for this project. So I can't wait to go for it.
Thank you. Councilmember Stephanie?
Thank you. Just a quick comment. I'm very excited to see this project move forward. I support it. It'll be wonderful to see this blighted area kind of bloom and become something new and beautiful again. I noticed in the staff report, you talk about community gardens within the project. I think that's a really unique idea to have that as a part of this, and I hope the community enjoys that. Thank you.
Councilmember Joe Dovin?
Thank you for speaking on it and thank you, Chad. I think it's a little bit early to congratulate you, but I know that you've been successful in other projects like Bria, which I drive by a lot. I know that it's doing very well. And I'm not knocking it for what you're doing, but I just want the property owners to be responsible. There are a lot of obligations, all the way through to the final development, and I would like to see it as approved for sale, not for rental, that it'll be the condos for sale in the CCNR and HOA, because it's a wholly different category if it's for rent. And then it triggers a lot more of the parking issues. So I'm a little bit more comfortable that it is for sale, and I do want it to be the envy of other districts. And so thank you for weighing in on that, Councilwoman Gwen Penelosa. And I do think that we need more in our town, in Garden Grove particularly, and around Orange County. So if you've built in other cities, I think it all helps, contributes to our affordable housing needs. And when we vote on this, we're also kind of setting a precedent and kind of inviting more development, because what we're voting for is a zone change. And most cities are not very favorable with spot zoning. This is what it is. It's a zone change. It is spot zoning. And it will set a precedent. And if we open up that door, I want more people to come through and put in for similar projects like this, because I think you are part of the solution, long-term. So when I'm speaking to the project with my concerns, it is to shepherd the project through to a successful conclusion that will set example for other developments in our city and in our county. And so I don't want to just speak to one project, but it may start a healthy trend. We are undermanned a housing element and so on to have higher density, to have more affordable housing. So this is very conducive to retaining our millennials. You know, people are going to need entry-level houses and they can't buy million-dollar homes. Maybe this is one of the solutions. So we welcome it, as long as the developers and the property owner approach it responsibly and the residents know that this is better for our city. So that, as you see, only a couple of people come and raise some concerns, and those concerns were addressed. So I don't see more concerns other than solving several issues all at once, including blight. And the property that is adjoining, which is being consolidated, has suffered from blight for many years, long before the Marie Callender burned down. So there's multiple concern that that corner, which is within walking distance from my house, five minutes, walking distance. And when it burned down, a lot of people were suffering from smoke. And I had projects in the area that I had to shut down because of the fire. So whatever happens there affects the rest of the neighborhood. And I want you to represent that to the property owner to the successful conclusion of this development, and that it'll be exemplary, so that there will be other projects that we can approve on with confidence that we're doing the best for our city, including more taxes to fix our sewer problem. And I'm all hands on deck here with the sewer deficiency issues. I'm a developer. I know that stops a lot of development when you have sewer deficiency. And yes, our sewer systems are going on 50, 60, 70, 80 years. And we do need this better development density so that we can solve problems long-term, long before... I mean, I'll be off council and probably dead before we solve some of these problems majorly. But let's start doing it, one project at a time. So thank you for coming in, and I truly encourage... And I know this is not easy. This is a lot of work. Okay? I've tried this. It's not easy. So thank you for your efforts. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments or questions before we close the public hearing? No more questions and comments? So we close the public hearing and I ask for the motion.
Oh, sorry, Joe.
I'll second. Thank you, sir.
Please call for the vote.
Motion received. Six yes votes.
Okay, that was the only item on the public hearing. Next is the item for consideration.
Item 5A is approval of a cooperative agreement with the city of Westminster for the rehabilitation of Garden Grove Boulevard from Beach Boulevard, East City Limit, to Edward Street. And Mr. Murray is here to give that report.
Thank you, Ms. Pomeroi, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, City Council is being asked to approve a cooperative agreement with the city of Westminster to rehabilitate the pavement on Garden Grove Boulevard from Beach to Edward Street. The agreement will provide for payment of the asphalt work that's located within the city of Garden Grove. Approximately 1/10 of the work is located in our city. City of Westminster will be the lead agency and they will be responsible for the contract administration and the construction documents. Staff has reviewed the construction documents and verified the work area in the city of Garden Grove. The estimated cost for our portion is a little over $290,000, which includes a contingency. The funding for the project will be gas tax, and this project is included in our capital improvement budget. Staff is recommending approval of the cooperative agreement and to authorize city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. This concludes staff's report. I'm available should you have any questions.
Do we have any question? Please call for the vote.
Motion received. Six yes votes. Okay. Item 5B. Item 5B is adoption of a resolution approving participation of the Clean California Local Grant Program, authorized appropriation of funds for a local match for the program, and approval of the Caltrans Restricted Grant Agreement. And there will be someone here shortly to give that report.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Protem Tran and councilmembers. The item before you is to accept award from the California Department of Transportation, Caltrans, for the Clean California Local Grant Program. In 2002, the city applied for the grant program, Cycle 1, to provide funding to promote beautification in public places. Staff requested 2.3 million, however, it was not selected at that time. In 2023, the city resubmitted an application, Cycle 2, reducing the scope with the commitment to improve parks and pathways. The total amount awarded is $441,000 and a required completion date of 2026. The awarded funds will focus on demonstrating a direct benefit to the underserved community surrounding the project. The Medal of Honor Trail has been identified as a site that meets this grant criteria. The project will be administered by the Economic Development and Housing Department with the support of the Community Services Department and Public Work Sanitary Division. The amenities reflect the public requests and community priorities, including the asks for trash reciprocals, signage, trail furniture, bike racks, landscaping, and mulch, and outdoor fitness equipment. The intent is to achieve reduction of waste within the public right-of-way, install improvements to park space, reduce the urban heat island effect and water runoff, enhance public health, areas for walking and recreation, and advance equity to disadvantaged communities. The grant requires a local match as a percentage determined by the severity of disadvantage of the communities surrounding the project, defined as all census tracts within a half-mile radius of the site. The city's committed contribution is calculated at 37.5%. The local cash match is $122,789. Funding for the match is anticipated to be a combination of general fund and other available funds from AQMD, park fees, water and sewer funds eligible for this use, and to minimize the impact to the general fund. It's recommended that City Council adopt a resolution authorizing participation in the Clean California Local Grant Program, approve appropriation of grant funds in the amount of $441,000, and required matching funds in the amount of $122,789. Authorize the city manager to execute vendor agreements and amendments for this project. Authorize the city manager to execute the restricted grant agreement amendments and make minor modifications on behalf of the city. Thank you. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Yeah.
The question I have is, in the staff report, it talks about trail furniture. Does that mean benches, or is it more decorative than that?
Yes, it includes bike racks, four bike racks and four benches.
Okay. I think just we need to be mindful as we move forward with the bike trails. At night, obviously, they're fairly dark and we don't necessarily have police on bikes or so forth going through those trails. And so when I hear about furniture and bike racks and different fitness equipment, I think all of that sounds great in theory, but I'm concerned about the degradation of those items over time, potentially them being vandalized, potential for them to be hotspots for crime, potentially for the homeless unhoused community to use them at some point in time. And as we talk about the safety of the trail moving forward and landscaping and everything, I just think we need to have those issues in the back of our minds as we're moving forward with, I think, just kind of beautifying and moving forward with the trails. As far as landscaping goes, I know that there's been some issues with the soil and some of the trees, they look almost like they burned up since being planted. And so I'm curious, what kind of landscaping would we potentially use to mitigate some of the issues with the soil?
Right now, we have programmed mulch to be put in, and the mulch would be mitigating any standing water, help preserve the trees. We also have in the maintenance plan an arborist that's going to come every month to check on the trees and check on the condition of the landscaping. We have those in plan.
I think that would be extremely helpful. So landscaping, it's more of just mulch in and around maybe what's already existing versus maybe planting of other shrubs or bushes or so forth?
For now, yes.
Okay. Well, I think the bike trails overall have been a huge success for the community. I think we saw when they first kind of came online during COVID. I know my family and I utilize them so much. It was so wonderful to be able to get outside and ride our bikes and just enjoy the community. So I think anything we can do to continue to beautify, to help them stay safe and clean, we need to do that. Obviously, we need more trash cans and we need to be mindful of trash, but we also can share in that responsibility. And so if we see litter on the bike trail and it's something safe that we can maybe pick up and discard, we need to be doing that as well. And I look forward to them being used from the community, you know, forever. And hopefully, they can continue to grow and expand in our community as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, honestly, since we've put the bike trail in there, we've all kind of seen, it needs to be spruced up a little bit, a little greener, you know, kind of make it look a little nicer, and garbage cans. But also to that, there's a lot of pets being walked. And sometimes people forget to pick up after their pets. And so, you know, it would be nice to have a couple pet stations where people can grab a bag and, you know, that kind of thing. But I'm looking forward to seeing the improvement there. I know we had a gal came here today, one of the speakers. She's still back here. Good. And I know, you know, that sentiment has been echoed by many of us and a lot of the community, and it'd be nice to see that spruced up a little bit. So I would recommend a couple poop bag stations for the pets. I think that might help with some of the sanitary problems as well. People will take their animals and forget to bring the bags or whatever. I know there's a cost associated with that, replenishing those bags every so often, but I think it'd be well worth it. With that, I'm in favor of this. I'll make the motion.
Oh, I want to make a little comment. So do you have comments or no? Oh, yes, so actually, the trail is in my district, and my parents live right around the corner. And early on, my sister and I actually walk and run there very often. But like we already talked about, it's kind of dead or brown more than green. And so I, at the beginning, I already mentioned many times that I really looking for different grants to improve park and pathway, things like that. So I did want to say thank to our staff. As you see in the report that they request 2.3 million, 2022, we didn't get it, but they keep pushing for us and, you know, at least we got something to improve our park. So thank you for your hard work and keep pushing.
I'll second the motion.
Please call for the vote. Next item, 5C.
Motion received. Six yes votes. Item 5C is approval of an agreement with AAA Oil Company doing businesses California Fuels and Lubricants doing business as California Fuels and Lubricants to provide fuel and fuel management for city vehicles and equipment. And Mr. Murray is here to give that report.
Pomeroy, Mayor Protem, Cindy Tran, and members of the council. Tonight, City Council is being after, authorized an agreement with AAA Oil Company for the purchase of fuel and they provide fuel management for the city vehicles and equipment. This city is proposing to use an existing contract that was, that was negotiated by the city of Santa Ana. So basically, we're piggybacking on their contract. The Public Works Department manages almost six hundred and fifty vehicles and various pieces of equipment, which consume about two hundred and seventy-five thousand gallons of fuel per year. Our current contract will inspire, expire in May of this year and the proposed agreement will extend it to December of two thousand and twenty-five and will have one two-year extension available. The cost will use hourly fluctuating price for unladed and renewable diesel, plus an appropriate markup for delivery. The fiscal impact will be one million dollars per year with three one-year options for a total of four million dollars, and that will be charged to the fleet operation budget. Staff is asked, is asking council to use the city of Santa Ana's bid process and prices, authorize in the proposed agreement and authorize the finance director to issue purchase order to AAA Oil Incorporated for one million dollars. This concludes staff's report, I'm available should you have any questions.
Council member? Chodovin?
Oh, just a quick comment, uh, thank you, Director Murray, for the presentation. I did, uh, learn from agenda review that this is a local garden growth business that we're contracting to. So I absolutely encourage that other businesses to step forward when we have a competitive bid for contracting. And I think we even spotlighted the owners of this, uh, business. So I, I welcome that and I agree with the rate comparison of Santa Ana, they're next door. I don't see any variation from that, so it's a competitive bid and I'm gonna approve it, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, we have a motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Um, call for the vote, please.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Thank you, next item, five C, or five D.
Item five D is adoption of a resolution authorizing an application for OCTA Community-Based Transit Circulators Program Project V funding. And Mr. Plajit is here to give that report.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
So we have a resolution tonight to support a new transit program shown on the screen. So the first slide shows the potential to do a new transit system, shown in blue. Uh, so we have fixed route seasonal and point-to-point shuttles. The new system will be all-electric vehicles, micro-transit, and ride-sharing also too. Uh, the type of vehicles you see in different cities around, including Huntington Beach and Long Beach, include, uh, electrical vehicles, uh, such as these, uh, serve five passengers, buses, and also shuttles. And the proposed transit route includes the Grove District, OC Street Car Terminus, Garden Grove Civic Center, Korea Town, and Little Saigon. So now the city, are you thinking? So the city is seeking an OT, OCTA grant to establish Garden Grove's Project V, uh, system. And the grant is basically for a maximum of two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars from OCTA, which will require a fifty percent matching, uh, from Garden Grove Tourist Improvement District Funds. It's projected the seven-year cost of this will be 2.27 million dollars. So basically, a two ninety-six grown at three percent for seven years comes to 2.27 million dollars. Uh, OCTA is looking for us to come up with their resolution by tomorrow, the fifteenth, or by Thursday, the February fifteenth. And then they're gonna go ahead and have recommendations to OCTA Board in spring of two thousand and twenty-four. And then finally, um, probably around July, they'll announce, uh, which cities will get the, the new funding for Project V. So we're looking to, um, for council support, supporting the resolution and asking, uh, you consider the, the resolution for this OCTA grant, and that concludes staff's presentation.
Um, Madam Mayor Protem and members of the City Council just quickly wanted to add, um, again, this is an OCTA grant. The last time the funding was available, I believe, was in two thousand and twenty. It only becomes available every five or so years, so the next opportunity will be quite some distance in the future. Um, I did want to add that, um, this particular program is for sort of first mile, last mile, um, micro-transit. So on that one slide where you saw the different types of programs, many cities in the county have used this funding for trolleys and shuttles. We're looking to do something a little bit different, something to, um, augment our existing, um, public transit system. Uh, the bus stop on Harbor in Garden Grove is the most, um, has the largest ridership of any bus stop in Orange County. And that's largely because there are folks that are being serviced to go to work in the resort district. And, um, generally, people are not willing to walk more than a quarter to a half a mile or about ten-minute walk to get to transit. So this is partly a solution to those who live a little bit further than that, who might be able to have employment opportunities in the resort district, they would be able to get there. That's a benefit to the hotels, our hotels in town, um, as well as tourists might benefit from this as well. But this is really to help the existing transit system, um, so I just wanted to add that, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, council member.
Thank you, um, overall, I think this is a fantastic idea. Um, I sit on the board of OCTA and so I love the opportunity for us to have these shared partnerships. Uh, and obviously transit is, uh, is a premium, especially along the Harbor Corridor. I like the idea of it not only helping working-class families here in our local community, but also helping, I think, kind of bring forth the idea of connecting our tourism corridor to our downtown and surrounding areas. We have a lot of locations that I think could be tourist attractions and are, Little Saigon comes to mind. And so being able to provide that transportation, to say to families and people staying on the corridor, hey, we have more to offer here in our city, and it's just a quick trip around the corner, basically, I think is fantastic. So I think this sounds like a great project. Is there any opportunity or way to perhaps, or is it very set in stone, the seven years? That does seem like a, a long time.
Yes, thank you for that question. We had the same concern. It is a long time to dedicate funding, so we asked OCTA specifically, what if after a year, the data, the ridership isn't there, we aren't finding value in this program, can we opt out? And the answer was yes, and in fact, OCTA is going to be monitoring that ridership data as well. Because from their perspective, if their funds are not being utilized to a good cause, they're not gonna want to continue to fund it either.
Okay, well, knowing that, and I, and I know my colleagues, I'm sure have questions and comments, but I'd like to make the motion, thank you.
I, I have some very minor questions, I'm, I'm very supportive of this. Of course, it's, uh, uh, gonna be a, a great service to our city, but there is some downside we need to kind of anticipate. And that is, um, if the ridership is high, then, uh, how many stops do we have? Like, we have bus stops, how many are we having on the route?
Yes, thank you, that's a great question. So this isn't a fixed route like a shuttle or a trolley is, this is on-demand. So when somebody calls, um, the micro-transit will come to them and take them to where they want to go. So it helps in that the speed to get to, um, where they're going is much quicker and the speed for the transit to come to them.
So there's no bus station, no stops?
Correct, it's not a fixed route.
Okay, because sometimes that creates the, uh, issues there, the maintenance issues. So we're, we, in, in the grant that we are going for, is there a built-in maintenance component?
So if the city is successful in being awarded this grant, we will go out to an RFP for an operator. So there will be a private operator operating the system and all maintenance costs will be part of that.
Okay, that's great, so it'll be built in with a contract with whoever's providing, and they're providing EVs, not fuels, vehicles. Strictly EV, that's part of the conditions.
Correct.
Uh, lastly, will we be charging the riders a fee?
Ye- yes, there is, um, potential for a nominal fee, it's going to depend on volume. Um, so the overall cost of the system and whether the operator is, if it, the volume's high enough, the fee goes down. So it will be a supply and demand situation.
Okay, and then, uh, can we have advertisements on the vehicles themselves to offset some of our costs, or that's not allowed?
I think it's an option. I know with, um, some of the providers, um, and my experience in Huntington Beach, where, um, circuit was used for micro-transit, there was advertising opportunities. So we can negotiate that as part of the contract and get input from the City Council on your desire.
My anticipation is where it's gonna help with the tourism in our area, which means, uh, tourist industry business would like to advertise and that will offset some of our costs long-term. So let's say after seven years and the project is not justified with ridership, do we discontinue it, defund it, or does it get to continue if we can find alternative funding for it?
Absolutely, if we find alternative funding and we find value in it, we can continue the program.
Regardless of what OCTA does?
If we find, yes, if we find sufficient funding.
Okay, so I'm gonna vote it up, it's one of the situation, I think if you snooze, you lose, because we gotta submit this tomorrow, right? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, um, Councilman Dovin actually asked most of the questions I wanted to ask, um, very, uh, relevant questions. They, um, the costs associated, how does that differ? I mean, um, this is short-term, so you would, in my, the way I vision it is you would take a bus to get to the main bus stop and then you gotta go another two miles or three or whatever it might be. So I, I would assume these things are gonna probably meet and pick people up close to transit areas, where they get off of one bus and go to another, or is it, I can call it and it comes to my house and picks me up and takes me, uh, you know, five miles, like, I, I mean...
Hey, you're able to call and it comes to your house and picks you up and takes you a short distance. It's not gonna take you twenty, thirty miles, but it'll take you two, three miles to that bus or service you need.
And the costs associated, it differs per person?
Uh, it's gonna be associated with the demand, so it could be between probably two and six dollars is the estimated cost.
Okay, yeah, and, and I think that's a great idea, I mean, I hope it's successful, I really do. I mean, i- i- if the need is there, but I also want the ability to back out, um, if there is not a big need for it. So it's kind of a experiment, I should say, at, at this point. Um, I like the idea that we can sell ad space to maybe, um, offset some of the costs that Garden Grove is putting towards it. Um, I don't like the fact they're electric vehicles with the, um, problems, obviously. The environmental issues that electric vehicles have, the pollution they cause, the slavery associated with the lithium, all that kind of stuff. I'm not a fan of that, but, uh, I think the program is good and so I will be voting it up.
Thank you, yeah, go.
Uh, I think this is really exciting and I would say that I would be hesitant to cut the program out for one year. I know that there's been similar programs that were more hyper-fixed to, um, specific areas that after a year were canceled. And I think that it takes a while for programs to ramp up, so I, I really hope that the city does a huge effort to promote this so that it is successful, because I think that's gonna be up to how we promote it and how we disseminate that information to our residents. But I think that it's going to be a highly utilized and a much-needed service if it's properly advertised and, and communicated to our community. Um, one of the things that it makes me think of, um, is the city of Anaheim with their several different, um, ride opportunities, but theirs are free, so they have Fran and Eve and Art. Um, so I think that those are things that we should look to for the future for Garden Grove. Um, it makes sense as a city our size and proximity to Disneyland and the resort that we would be looking at things like that, especially for workers. I, I think, um, for those specifically who work in the hotels, they, they should be given some sort of pass where they could get this service for free, um, because I think the issue with a lot of them, especially hotel workers, is they're already working two to three jobs to make a living and now we're gonna charge them extra just to try to get to work. Um, and so I think that this is a great start, I think two to six dollars is reasonable, it's only two to, or a five-mile radius. Um, but to think about what is beyond just today and thinking about the true success of this program and not capping it at the knees and assuming that it's gonna fail. So how do we make it successful, what do we contribute to make that happen? Um, because this is necessary and this is gonna be a great way to get more cars off the road if they're able to get onto transportation like this that will take them where they need. Because as someone who had took the bo, the bus to get to work, the most annoying thing was having to walk more than a mile to get to the next bus stop because where I was didn't have the bus for, to the next place that I needed to go. Um, it also made me late a lot to work, um, having to rely on public transportation. So I think this is a great, um, gap for that situation and that a lot of our residents will benefit from. So those are just my comments and I'm really excited for this.
Thank you, I have a quick question. So, um, when will this start if we go forward with this, the service?
Uh, I think we'd want to make sure we're getting allocated with our funding, uh, in July and then we do the RFP then, and then from there, probably within a couple months, implement the system, so.
And what's the, sorry, and what's the maximum capacity for whatever the big bus or big van that they have?
Yeah, varies from the small vehicles being four, mid-vehicle would be five or six people, and then the, the small electric buses can only handle like ten, ten to twelve people.
Okay, 'cause we have, um, in our city, we have a lot of event at the Krakatoa and every time we have event, there's always pack and, um, you know, big, with big buses, so this would help a lot. Thank you, um, I think we have motion.
One, one quick comment, it would also be kind of good, our new, uh, automotive manufacturer, Garden Grove Harbinger, they make these kind of vehicles, it would be kind of cool if we could utilize, uh, one Garden Grove company to help another Garden Grove thing. So anyway, just a...
Please call for the vote.
And that's what... Motion received, six yes votes.
Thank you, that was the last item for consideration, we, next item, we, the, or didn't present, a second reading?
Item six A is the second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-nine fifty-one, entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove," amending section two fifty-six thirty of chapter two fifty-six. Of title two of the Garden Grove Municipal Code pertaining to the composition and appointment of tenant commissioners to the Garden Grove Housing Authority.
Second.
Call for the vote, please?
Motion received, six yes votes.
Thank you, um, matter from City Council Member and City Manager, seven A.
Item seven A is an update on the Central Cities Navigation Center, CCNC, as requested by City Manager Kim, including approval of amendment number two to the agreement with Borders Architects for Architectural Consulting Services and approval of amendment number one to the agreement with Tomco Construction, Inc. for construction of the Central Cities Navigation Center project. And we have staff here to give that report.
Good evening Mayor Protem and members of the City Council. At the request of City Manager Kim, the item before you is the construction update for the Central Cities Navigation Center project. The construction for this project began in June two thousand and twenty-three and it's currently at seventy percent completion. The first slide shares high-level construction project milestones and percentage of completion for each. For the building exterior, uh, site work has been fully completed. This includes demolition, grading, underground utilities. For the interior, framing and drywall installation have been finished. At seventy percent completion, other construction tasks we successfully fulfilled include concrete work, uh, first paint coat and floor seal application, and the installation of the Edison Power Pool, bathroom shower tiles and accessories, and kitchen and dining hall equipment. Within the next two months, we will install asphalt pavements, air conditioning units, and switchgear. Before project closeout, we will conduct a final coordination with Edison, Spectrum, and SoCal Gas, moat work and furniture installation. Staff has released an RFP for a furniture vendor and the award of this contract is tentatively scheduled for March. The following presentation slides showcase the latest progress photos of the project. The first, uh, photo is the original rendering of the project reflecting our vision for a building with stucco exteriors, metal awnings and wood siding. The photos below the rendering capture the construction progress toward our project vision. Um, on this slide, uh, shows the locations of the locker area and the installed Edison Power Pool, which is one of our project's critical milestones. Moving on to the building interior, as you can see, the navigation center's kitchen is now coming along with all equipment installed. Here's the dining hall for the navigation center with the ice dispenser, um, coffee machine installed and the drinking fountain area as well. The next photos show, um, the design of our clients and staff bathrooms, all bathrooms are ADA compliant. And the last photos show the design of our clients and staff dorm area for men, women, and couple clients where beds will be located once the, um, where the beds will be located once the center is fully furnished. Security cameras will be installed throughout the navigation center for the safety of clients and staff at the request of the operator. Security and IT system coordination between the operator, security vendor, city's police department, and IT department have been initiated. This concludes my construction update portion of this item. Following my update, the two amendments before you provide funding support for the construction of the navigation center with an intent to mitigate potential schedule delays in light of the urgent demand of the navigation center's timely opening. Amendment number two adds twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and five dollars to Borders Architects' existing agreement to authorize additional hours beyond their original scope and project architectural closeout activities. According to Borders' original agreement, closeout activities are considered as additional services. These activities include providing a final punch list and report as both drawings and other project acceptance documentation. Amendment number one adds two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars to Tomco Construction existing agreement to authorize one-hundred-seventy-two-thousand-seven-hundred-twenty-four dollars and two cents to onboard a security camera system vendor under Tomco, and eighty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-seventy-five dollars and ninety-eight cents to support the project until its completion. The cost breakdowns for both amendments are included in your staff report. There is no fiscal impact on the general fund, funding for both amendments already exists in the navigation center's construction budget. No additional appropriation is necessary. In approving the mentioned additional funding request, the navigation center project will remain within budget and on schedule to complete construction and begin operation by June twenty-twenty-four. It is recommended that the city council approve amendment number two in the amount of twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and five dollars to Borders Architects for Architectural Consulting Services for the navigation center project, approve amendment number one in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars to Tomco Construction for unforeseen change orders for the navigation center project, authorize the city manager or her designees to execute amendment number two to Borders Architects, approve additional amendment terms, and make minor modifications as appropriate thereto on behalf of the city, and authorize the city manager or her designees to execute amendment number one to Tomco Construction, approve additional amendment terms, and make minor modifications as appropriate thereto on behalf of the city. This concludes my staff report, staff is available for questions.
Thank you, yes.
Do I just have one question? On the unforeseen pending change orders, the eighty-seven thousand, is that not to exceed, or we already know that's the cost of labor and materials? Is that already fixed? Or is that a not to exceed type of thing?
So, given the trends of the construction of the navigation center, we asked our construction manager to do an analysis for an estimated amount of all the, all the potential change orders until the project completion, so the eighty-thousand dollar amount is the estimated amount for all potential change orders.
Okay, so to complete the system, you've projected out to include that? Yeah, 'cause, you know, obviously, we saw, it's not a huge facility, it seems like a lot for security, but you can't put a price on security, I've found, so, things cost money, so, okay, thank you, that was my only question, thanks.
Thank you for your question.
So, my quick question, security cameras, a hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand dollars on a small facility like that seems a little excessive, what, why is it so high? Because I know I just put the security cameras on my home, there was eight of them, and it was like three hundred bucks. Even with prevailing wages? Even with prevailing wages, I just did it myself, you know, that, I mean, I'm.
That's prevailing wage.
Yeah, that is prevailing wage, I'm doing it myself, but with that being said, a hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand, does that include the monitoring? And, I mean, are these gold-plated cameras? I don't know, but I, that seems a little excessive to me.
So the total number of cameras within the facility is going to be four to four security cameras, and the one-seventy-two-thousand dollars also include the design plan, also include the product procurement, installation, and coordination between the security vendor and our IT department and the subcontractor with Tomco.
Did that go out to RFP?
So that did not go out to RFP, and the reason why we did that is to make sure that the project is on schedule.
Okay, so forty-two cameras? Forty-four cameras? Divided, yeah, oh, he's doing the math right now.
But that's not just the camera, that's, it includes.
The labor and installing.
A lot more than just paying for the camera.
But even with that, that's, in my mind, that's very excessive. I, you know, Councilman O'Neill's right, it does, you know, security is a very important thing, but we also gotta look at, you know, that, when you look at almost two-hundred-thousand dollars for security cameras on a fairly small building, I mean, it's a good-sized building, but it's, you know, it's not huge. This isn't the Taj Mahal here, and that seems very excessive, so, I'm just, that's just a concern for me, but with that being said, I will.
If I could just add, I think that this is a pretty robust security system without violating anybody's rights, but there is potential for activity to occur that we definitely want to monitor. We did have conversations with our police department as well, and so this was the operator's request. I think it will be good from a police perspective to be able to ensure that there's not materials and whatnot being brought in that are not supposed to, there's, could be fighting that happens. There's different reasons that it's good to have a really robust security system. The vendor that was selected, or the city staff was having conversations with about a system, you know, there's three components to project management, there's time, there's cost, and there's quality. And there was, my understanding, direction that timeliness was kinda the most important, most urgent component of that three-legged stool, and going out to bid would have put this project behind schedule. So there was a decision made to have Tomco sub directly with the vendor that the city had been discussing. Perhaps we are paying a little bit more as part of that decision, but it kept the project on schedule, and it didn't end up going over the budget allocated for this project.
I mean, we'll just follow up on that, we knew that this facility was gonna have cameras when we went into this process years ago. There was plenty of time to go to RFP on this. I don't think it's a little bit excessive, I think it's a lot excessive. We could have read the tea leaves, we're gonna need cameras for this facility a year ago. Let's put it out to RFP and get the best price for our taxpayers. I don't know, I just have mixed emotions on this one.
I just wanna reiterate that we're not going to the store and buying forty-four cameras and paying a hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand dollars, because that would be ridiculous, this includes installation, the cam, I'm assuming the, whatever, monitoring computer screens or whatever in coordination with our IT, so it's the labor, it's the cameras, it's the equipment, and it's the coordinating to make sure all the cameras are in sync, that you can see them. It's much more robust than just going to ordering on Amazon or going to Best Buy and buying cameras, you know, Arlo's and putting them up yourself, this isn't gonna be on your phone for you to open up, this is a very robust security system. I think, Councilmember Brennan, I respect what you're saying, but I think you're downplaying the importance and the full system that is being put in place into the navigation center, number one. Number two, I think in the future, when you provide, I should have told this to staff earlier, so my apologies, I'm also trying to keep a little tiny human alive, so my brain is not always fully functioning. But in the future, when we have updates for the navigation center, I think it's imperative that we also include the monies we've been given for the navigation center, because these numbers sound very high, but we've been given millions and hundreds of thousands of dollars from the county of the state for this particular project, so I want to rest assure the community and residents of Garden Grove that we have done at a due diligence, we have exhausted all of our options as trying to draw down dollars. We are also partnering with two other cities that are gonna help front costs for this, so while these numbers sound very high, there's monies that we've been given and that we are working with other cities to provide to ensure that this facility is top-notch, it has everything it's needed, and that it's gonna happen on time, because this has been an ongoing issue, it's been an issue for the last eight years, which is why I was so, so, such a big champion for getting this, and getting it in my district, because as I recall, no one else wanted it in their district, so let's bear that in mind. Whatever it takes, we need to get this done, it's gonna be a big price tag, but not having this is an even bigger price tag for the community of Garden Grove, because the number of times that I've sat on this dais to complain about Harbor and Trask, Trask and Euclid, Trask and New Hope, whatever it is, you're complaining about Beach, you're complaining about Garden Grove Boulevard, that is excessive amounts of money, we are spending money on Garden Grove PD, on Public Works, going out to clean these places, we're doing the job of Caltrans, this is gonna help alleviate that, we need that done yesterday, we needed this done seven years ago. So I don't wanna delay this any further, we need forty-four cameras, probably more, outside, inside, all around, probably up and down the street, because this is gonna cause chaos in that area as well. So I'm very supportive of this, I think you've all done a phenomenal job, and you know that we wanted this done quickly, so I appreciate this being expedited, and I think that this has my full support, I'd like to make the motion.
Before we do that, Councilmember Dovin.
I'm in the middle, 'cause I'm here in both sides, and you both make sense. But I don't want any buyer's remorse. And I think you mentioned it, time, cost, and quality. Now, we're willing to bear the cost, or even willing to delay it, I am, if I need to, if the cost is excessive. But in this case, yes, I think it's high, but not excessively high, I think it's within a certain limit. The buyer's remorse is gonna come when the quality is not there, we've paid for something that is gonna be a continued expense. But that's not my concern, of the council member, George, Biden already raised his concern. My concern is the unforeseen part, and this addresses Christie Lee, you're part of the work. I know you've done a very thorough job, but I don't want any more unforeseen cost, okay? I'm a contractor, and I do bill myself as consultant, and it's on Tomco. If they're gonna hit us up for more money, I wanna hear it now, not in June. So if we're gonna be delayed, might as well take the delay. Otherwise, I'm holding their feet to the fire that this security system will work robustly. I don't want any buyer's remorse, and, yes, we got money from Orange County, and the state, but we have to spend it reasonably, so we can answer up to them, so we can get future funding. Otherwise, if we just go ahead and authorize every unforeseen change orders, that's going to be a demerit. And I want the other cities involved to know, including Fountain Valley and Westminster, who are our partners in this, that they share in the cost, and that they won't have buyer's remorse, and they won't say it's because Garden Grove voted for it, and then we're gonna get more unforeseen change orders, I'm gonna want Tomco in front of us. So please put that down, Christie. I'm gonna want Tomco representative right here in front of us, so we can grill them on any quote-unquote unforeseen change order. Am I with George there? How did we not foresee a security camera system? I wasn't here on council yet, but I think that's obvious for a facility like this. So it's on Tomco as a consultant to tell me right now, right here today, or shortly in the next meeting, what else is unforeseen? That's the part I'm concerned about, not the hundred-something-thousand-dollar, okay? We're gonna spend it, let's get the quality robust system, and don't hit me up for another unforeseen change order. And I truly appreciate council member Wen Penalosa that it's in her district, and I'm gonna vote with her. I want it there, and I want whatever she needs for that district and that project, I'm gonna get behind her. But it's not on account of Tomco or any consultant that they need those funds. I don't want this project to be held hostage, and I have experienced that as a consultant and contractor when subcontractors holding my project hostage and says we can't go RFP because it'll delay the project. That doesn't sit well with me. So I'm gonna vote it up, but I want publicly note that any contractor who do this in the future will have to stand in front of me and this council and answer up to us, thank you.
Make a comment, please.
Thank you, this is something that we've been working towards and working at for a very long time as a city council and as a staff. We know that there is a need, and we are providing that need, we have partnered with other cities. As Kimwen Penalosa mentioned, we have received ample amounts of money from the state and from the county. This project has a lot of eyes on it, and so I truly believe that our staff knows that, takes this in all seriousness, is working extremely diligently on this project, and sometimes we have to trust their expertise and their hard work and their time on this project. I don't think that they would egregiously spend this money on security cameras for a homeless shelter, which is extremely important, just blatantly, just to spend that money. I believe that they've taken the time and the due diligence to make these choices, put these on the agenda for us to vote on. So I trust staff's opinion, I wanna support this, and I'll second the motion.
I have a clarifying question. Can either one of you just explain to me what unforeseen change order meant? Because I know that we've talked about security cameras since the very beginning of this project, so I wanna have a better or clearer understanding of what this means.
So I'm gonna start, and Christie might add to it, because some of this was prior to my tenure with the city, but it is correct that security cameras were envisioned. I'm under the understanding that the operator wanted a more robust system, having operated shelters, having experience. So there was always money, that's why we're not asking for more money, there was always money budgeted for security. It was the intent that the city was going to contract directly for that, that's why it was not included in Tomco's contract. So because of the timing and the urgency, it was, a decision was made to have Tomco sub directly with the vendor that the city had already been chatting with and talking to. And that started eating into their contingency. It wasn't anticipated as a cost, so it's kind of unfair that it eats up some of the contingency. This is an existing building, and when you start to do rehabilitation to an existing building, there are unforeseen things that come up. So some of those unforeseen change orders were things of virtue of an older building, when you start to open up walls, there's things that you find that you didn't anticipate. So it's a combination of some of those kinds of things, but also with the fact that the security camera system took up such a large portion of their contingency. It was a budgeted expense, but wasn't supposed to be part of Tomco's contract. And then, I don't know, Christie, if there was anything you wanted to add to that.
Thank you, and I think that's really helpful, I think in the future, when we have staff reports, that we should include this type of background. I know that we were told verbally, but maybe some people didn't comprehend, and it got lost in translation, but I don't want to continue to have these types of incidents happen on the dais, and then we get rage from the community, because they're like, we're spending a hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand dollars on forty-four cameras, that doesn't add up. We need to provide the context, because I know you guys are working really hard and doing your due diligence, and I, we've received lots of money, I know, because I was the one calling Senator Tom Umberg and Katrina Foley and Doug Chaffee and Supervisor Doe to get us that money, so I know that we have money there. So I just want to make sure that we have that context, so when we ask these questions on the dais, it doesn't turn into this, like, argumentative debate, we've, this project has been in the works for, since the beginning of the pandemic, and I've been pushing for it from way before that, and advocating and volunteering my district because of that fact. And so I just want to ensure that when, when issues like this come up, we're providing more context so that when someone is reading this report, that information is there and doesn't get lost in translation and become this, like, witch hunt for, like, staff mismanaging money, because I know you're not. Because when you read this report, it doesn't provide that information that you just explained. So that's why I asked that clarifying question for the record, for residents to hear and understand, because I know we talked about security cameras, I know that was something that both chiefs, previous chief and current chief, had talked about when we first had the several meetings on the third floor about this project going live and what that would look like. So I just want to make sure that everybody is aware of the fact that this wasn't a mistake, this wasn't, you know, something we didn't think of or calculate in the budget, it was an unforeseen change order, and I wanted to provide that definition for the public, thank you.
I just wanted a quick comment that, yeah, thank you, we're just caught a little bit off guard on the, on the cost when this agenda came out last week. But I, I'm gonna assume that most of these change orders have already been completed, we owe the money, and in the, for the project like that, you have an open ceiling, there's more detail in the ceiling work and the conduit system for the cabling and all that, it's a little more cleaner, because it's an open ceiling concept. And the point I wanted to make was, these are change orders, this, most of this work has already happened, I'm assuming, except for the final. This, most of this work has already happened, I'm assuming, except for the final camera installation. So all the backbone's already been done. Just a little caught off guard, a little concerned about the price, but, but, but it is a state, federal, city, multi-city project. Um, and I'm gonna vote for it and I, you know, it's...
It is what it is.
Thank you.
Just, just, uh, I just wanted to elaborate, because, uh, Councilwoman Kim Win Penalosa, um, made some good points. And I don't, I just want to make it very clear, I am not accusing staff of any malfeasance whatsoever, okay? Um, and I do think you guys are doing your best and I understand this is an urgency type of thing to keep the project rolling and that's why it didn't go out for RFP. Um, yeah, when we see this, I'm, I'm very familiar with security cameras and systems and installation. And so when I see this, um, I know the highest LPR camera, most expensive one out there that can read license plates at a hundred yards away and, you know, the top-of-the-line setups, you're looking about five grand for one of those. Um, so I'm assuming these are all LPR cameras and they're all awesome, you know, whiz-bang cameras. But with that being said, I don't want any... Um, I am voting for the project, because I do understand that it needs to be done. And I do understand the need for the community. Um, I do wish this went to RFP. I think we had ample of time, as, uh, uh, Councilwoman Kim Win Penalosa had mentioned. We've been talking about this for years. Security cameras have always been there. So I, I do think, um, there might have been some kind of dropping the ball there somewhere, where maybe we should have been thinking about this before it became a rush. But I don't think there was any malfeasance or any nefariousness going on. I think you guys are working hard and I think you're doing a great job overall. So I just want to make that very clear.
I have a couple of comments. Um, so I'm excited to see this project to, um, open for the homeless. But, um, I just want to put on the record, I want to say thank to council member Chorovin to bring up a topic that I actually have that in my same concern, that not in this case that we, could we have some other background, but, um, whenever the contractor, um, come back to us and ask for more money, I want them to know right now that this council member gonna look into that. And I think staff know that every time I see additional more money, I always ask staff, okay, what is it? And I look into the number. But, um, I totally agree with council member Chorovin about that. I have seen that several times and that's not the way it's gonna run here. This council member gonna look at the number and we're gonna hold you accountable for it. That's it for me. Thank you.
Yes. Uh, call for the vote, please?
Motion, motion received. Six yes votes.
Okay, 7B.
Thank you. Item 7B is an update on the strawberry zest statue acceptance and commissioning as requested by the city council, and Mr. West will give that report.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, Madam Mayor Protam Tran, council members, just a brief presentation. Uh, the strawberry zest statue concept, as you all know, was first introduced by council member Braggam back in late twenty-one. And then early twenty-two, the council did take action to approve its placement, uh, at Fire Station eighty-four, I'm sorry, eighty-three on Valley, eighty-four? Eighty-four on Valley View Street, excuse me. Um, and essentially that, uh, approved the placement upon successful completion of the fundraising efforts. And so as of the end of December, sufficient funds, uh, I know the staff report identifies a hundred and twelve thousand, it's actually a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars have been successfully raised by the community foundation. Uh, just as a reminder, local artist Jennifer Stewart designed the concept. I think the image is up. Uh, which is, consists of a strawberry emerging from the peel of an orange, symbolizing the agricultural heritage of the area. When Orange County really was orange and when Garden Grove's leading crop was the strawberry. The finished sculpture will be approximately three and a half feet tall and approximately eight feet long. The statue is now ready and is prepared to be transported to Oregon, where it will undergo a digital scanning and molding, and then followed by transport to the foundry for the bronze casting. All in all, that process is expected to take up to about four months. Um, the artist has indicated that that's a conservative estimate, so hoping that it'll be done sooner. And so the item before you is a recommendation that the council accept the strawberry zest statue upon completion of final construction and direct staff to coordinate and complete the installation of the statue at the previously approved location in front of Fire Station eighty-four. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, I thank you for the presentation. Um, you pretty much covered everything. Uh, we raised a hundred and seventeen thousand and seven hundred dollars. Um, so we were trying to raise a hundred and twenty, so we were about two thousand, two hundred shy, but the artist has agreed to, uh, lower her fees to make it all work for us. So, um, this has all been an effort. I've done all the fundraising, basically. And, uh, and basically acceptance tonight will be that you all agree to accept it as a gift and allow Public Works to put the base down and make the base, so we can put it on there and dedicate it and all that when it, when it comes in. Um, so I'm really excited about this. This has been a, a, a long project in the making, since actually twenty-eighteen, and we got delayed by COVID and, uh, about a hundred other delays. Uh, the bronze became almost impossible to get for a while there, so we couldn't even consider, um... So, uh, it's finally happening, so by this spring, we should have that thing installed. Um, also with that, um, she makes a, a half-scale or, uh, model of it, which is about two and a half feet by four feet, kind of a... And it's gonna get scanned digitally and they're gonna send that to the foundry. And they actually make it now with a new process where they 3D print it with the bronze. And then the artist goes in and does the coloring and all that. Um, but the small model, well, um, I'm hoping that, um, we'll be gifted that as well and we can place it here in the community center or over at City Hall. It'll be a smaller version of it, uh, about half the size. And that'll be nice, so we'll have it, you know, throughout the city and kind of beautify. So that's the idea. And, uh, anyway, thank you all for your support over the years. I know it's been a long me gabbing about it and trying to make something happen, but, uh, I do appreciate everybody's, uh, support.
May I? That's, yeah, I'll second that. Um, I, I think it's, obviously it's been a long time in the making. Um, council member, do you know if in the future, would there be a way to... I know it's bronze, so maybe not. Would it ever be able to be clear-coated or to protect it from graffiti or anything like that? Just because it is an expensive piece of art and just to, just for the protection of it long-term?
So initially, when it comes out, um, because it's colorized bronze. So the strawberry will be red, the seeds will be appropriate color, the, the leaves will be green. The whole, um, orange will be orange. The inside of the peel will be like that white color that the inside is. So it's, it's all been, it'll all be colorized, but then on top of that, there's a clear coat, uh, protection as well. Um, however, that'll only last about ten years and it'll have to be reapplied. Um, and, uh, the color as well, probably after twenty years or so, will need to get touched up, because, you know, being out in the sun and, you know...
Sure, but there is some protection, at least for the foreseeable future.
Yeah, initially, there'll be some protection on it. Um, it'll have to get touched up again, um, over the years and, you know, and, uh, I'm, I'm... Probably none of us will be on this council at that point, but...
I'm just glad it's gonna be protected and so forth. Thank you.
Yes, council member Chorovin?
I just have a comment and a couple of suggestions. First of all, commendations to, um, uh, council member Braggam for seeing this project through and congratulations that we've raised the fund. But my suggestions is, can we keep, keep adding to that fund? Um, in anticipation of maintenance costs, whether it's five or ten years down the road, I'm assuming that the community foundation would still be around, whether we're still on council or not, so that we keep the, uh, the website that we donate, we keep accepting donation, if we could. That's my suggestion, all the way...
Yeah?
Yeah, all the way until it's built out. And I know that we're gonna have some sort of recognition for the donors, like a plaque, depending on how much they donate, so on. And that the big one is gonna be seen from the freeway, right? Or highway or the main artillery?
Main road, yeah.
Yeah, main road. So that's a big deal. It's gonna be very prominently featured and it's really the emblem of our city. And so I, I am fully supportive, not just the big installation, but the smaller version here also. So I don't know, we're voting on, tonight will impact that, but I, I would like to be able to be on the record that I'm supportive of the smaller version here also. And maybe this council will be recognized for the installation. If, if not the big one, then at least the smaller one here.
Oh, actually.
Yeah, that would be great. And then, and then we can keep contributing to it. I know I've, I've pledged some donation. I haven't made good on that and that's why I want to keep those channels open. So that other people like me, who drive their fee, um, do get an opportunity to donate.
Um, answer to your question, um, in the future, going forward, um, there's gonna be an area in front of the sculpture where they can sell bricks.
Oh, that would be great.
And you'd like to get, have your name put on a brick for fifty dollars or whatever it might be and to raise money in the future, um, to, uh, you know, upkeep of the, of the sculpture. It will, um, last about ten years, the original finish on it, maybe a little longer. Um, and, and it costs about two or three thousand dollars to refinish it when it comes time.
So we will need a maintenance budget, yeah.
But it's something that could be done by local community effort or the community foundation by selling bricks or something like that to, you know, keep it nice.
So, um, this is also cutting-edge technology. First time I've heard you can 3D print in bronze. You know, that's amazing, right? And we can really, um, be, um, kind of a model for other sculptures. And the first meeting I came on board when, as councilman, I promoted public art. And I know, um, council member Kofatine is very supportive of public art. So it's really, really a feather in our cap. Uh, if we can pull this off and, and everyone in the city and, and further beyond the city will be able to enjoy it. I fully expect it to be a landmark. So that's a, it's a big deal. Thank you.
And I heard the security feature is a three-inch fire hose if someone tries to face it. Just kidding.
Any other question? I have a quick comment. So thanks to the staff and, uh, community, uh, foundation for helping out with this. But, um, I'm, I mean, right now, I'm not like a new council member anymore, but I want to say that I'm so happy to sit here, just to see the passion from each one of the council member here. Um, I could go around the room and say all the thing that you have to spend extra time, extra effort and just pushing so that would make positive, um, impact to our community. But, um, talking about this project, I do, because I'm sitting here and I just like, see all the passion that you put in, it's a long process. You spent a lot of time on it and this is just for our community. So I just want to say that, just because later on, I cannot say that. I'm a new council member and have that impression, but I'm so glad to be here with all of you guys today. That's it. I think we have a motion. Okay, be comfortable. Yeah.
Do I have to excuse myself? Since I raised the money? Okay.
Motion, motion received. Six yes votes.
If I didn't make the motion, I wasn't certain.
Okay, we're gonna go around the table, so start with you, sir?
Actually, um, no, but tomorrow is Valentine's Day, so all you boyfriends and husbands, if you don't want to be in the doghouse, uh, go get yourself some chocolate for your ladies and, uh, cards and whatnot.
Nice. And that's what I was gonna mention too. Uh, my wife and I are celebrating thirty-nine years of our first date, which was February thirteenth. We kind of celebrate that more than our wedding anniversary. So it's thirty-nine years ago today we went out, so, um, gotta had to say that. But I did also want to say that, um, be cognizant of your, for the OCFA, you know, I'm your representative for OCFA. And we did have some fatalities in the recent months of people that were sleeping and their fire, their smoke detectors didn't work because they didn't have batteries in them. And it's just heartbreaking to see that if they would have had a smoke detector that was... So check those smoke detectors, replace the batteries, get new ones. There's actually a lot of resources to get free ones installed. So if you need it, contact the city or OCFA. We have the best division chief in, in all of Orange County. We have Craig Covey is our, it's Division One for a reason, because we're the number one division in OCFA. But, uh, I was so humbled a couple of weeks ago, uh, Garden Grove, I was honored to be unanimously supported for chair of the Orange County Fire Authority at the last meeting. So I'm excited this year to do that job. It's a great organization. Your fire, you have a top-notch fire service in the city of Garden Grove and throughout the county. From Chief Fennecy to our own TJ McGovern, who's the assistant chief of the authority, and then Craig Covey, and, and actually twelve hundred firefighters, four hundred plus administrative and management people. Just a top-notch agency and I'm so proud that Garden Grove has a seat on there, especially as the chair. I'm gonna make everybody proud and we're gonna do some good things in the year to come. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll be breached today, because I used up a lot of time on the agenda items. So, uh, just a Happy New Year. It's still dead. Uh, we are celebrating Lunar Chinese New Year. And, uh, for everybody who's born in the Year of the Dragon, a special shout-out for the Year of the Dragon. This is our first meeting in the Year of the Dragon, a very auspicious sign and, uh, the start of the whole, the old zodiac, a hundred and forty-four years. So that's the, I'm in a celebratory mood and I, uh, thank you for bringing up Valentine's Day. And, um, I'm kind of confused why it's called the Dog House, because there's no dog there except me. I don't know, maybe it should be called the Joe's House.
Find out.
Right. So anyway, thank you, everyone. That's it for me.
Thank you. Um, I have a, an event coming up that I just want to make mention of. Um, in speaking with our police department and our small business community, um, quite a few businesses in Garden Grove have trespassing ordinances or, or letters on file, which allows them, uh, to just take care of their properties after hours if there should be any issues. Uh, new legislation was passed, Assembly Bill six oh two, that now these letters have to be notarized. So that puts kind of an additional burden on our small business community. So I'm gonna go ahead and partner with our Garden Grove Chamber, our Downtown Business Association and the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association and host an event on February twenty-ninth from eight to noon. Uh, it'll be held at Coastline in their large lecture hall, right when you walk in. And, uh, I have a notary ready to go and we're going to allow businesses to come in and get their anti-trespassing letters notarized. So I will have a flyer soon that will be able to be spread around the community, put on social media and so forth. But just to the Garden Grove business community, those that you have those letters on file, you need to get them notarized and this is gonna be an opportunity to kind of have it be a one-stop shop. So you can stop by and get those letters notarized, have a little breakfast and be on your way. So again, that'll be February twenty-ninth from eight to noon and it will be at Coastline Community College, uh, right here in our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, first, I'd like to wish a belated happy birthday to, uh, the man behind the camera, Jeff from GTTV. Um, uh, next, I wanted to share that I attended Santiago High School's Wellness Center grand opening. I just want to highlight that. It's an amazing little space there for students to go in and have mental health services, take a break. Um, a lot of resources there available for them and I think we've had a lot of community members talk about this. Um, and so I just want to give kudos to the school district for really prioritizing the mental health of our students. Um, as mentioned, it is still Lunar New Year, so I wanted to talk about all the wonderful events that we participated in this weekend. Um, it was overwhelming. There was a lot of places to jump around to, but I'm really glad that I got to participate and bring my little Penelope along for her first Lunar New Year. Uh, she was wearing a onesie that said, "I'm here for the leafy." So she did get several red envelopes. Uh, we advertised that accordingly to ensure her, the best first Lunar New Year for her. Um, and then I wanted to bring back up, um, to the city manager, uh, last year, we did speak to students from Doig Intermediate regarding the mural on Trask. I know, um, some time has passed, but I would like to reengage that project and make sure that we make that happen um, before graffiti picks back up in that area. I'm, I'm still seeing a huge problem along Westminster, um, at Enterprise, the Lurker Store, the electrical boxes that I've mentioned countless times. So before that, um, slots over to the next street, I want to make sure that we're really prioritizing beautifying our areas, especially where our students are walking. Um, and that's all that I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. City manager?
Thank you, uh, Mayor Protam Tran and members of the city council. There's just, uh, one highlight I wanted to mention. Over the next few weeks, we, um, the Economic Development Department is hosting, um, and coordinating a fair, with a Fair Housing Foundation workshops to be held on February twenty-second, uh, March eighth, uh, March twelfth and May sixteenth. And more information is on the city website. It's, uh, we extend invitations to tenants and landlord to learn more about their rights relating to, um, housing. So, um, with the first event held at the Borna Clinton Youth and Family Center, located at one two six-six-one Sun Swept, and the, um, program will be presented in Spanish.
Thank you.
Anything for me? Thank you.
Um, city clerk? No? Okay. Um, I have a couple of items. Well, um, first, uh, I just want to say thank to, um, Public Works, um, and the team there. There was a water pile that burst fire in front of my house. Um, the team came, within a couple hour, they came, they put the cone and they worked on it until late, but really dark and at night time. And I came and give, you know, asking if they need anything, but... So that's for the first time they came to... But, so that's where the first time they came to kind of stop the, the water. And then after that, they came back and fixed the, the street. So I just want to say thank you for the good work there and they took the action right away. Second, I attend the, there was a delegate team from Manila, Metropolitan Manila Development Authority. And I just, I was so impressed with our Linda, right, Linda and Dave and our chief Covey for their, they, this presentation about the emergency. And yeah, I was just so impressed, like all the little detail that they have and the Manila team was so impressed about it and they would try to learn from our city. So that was very nice to get to participate in something like that. Next item, kind of relate to what councilmember Win Penalozza talked about, all the event in our community. I just want to say thank to Christine for organizing the event for us to go and visit. Couple of the TV channel and the news, she took a lot of effort to make sure that we look good. We have to know what to present to the news and just making sure that we were doing our job the right way. And the news were very impressed with how we treat them. Some other, there was a news, they came from another city and they said, they were so impressed, everything about our staff, about our council members, about our city. So that's great job, Christine. Earlier, we recognized the SRT team. Homeless is something that like we all have the headache or, you know, think about that all the time. But as I mentioned a couple of time, they came, they cleaned up the trash. They have to face the, you know, the needle, the drug and then they go home with their family. So just want to let the resident out there to see that all the hard work that they have to put in. And I just want to say thank you for the support. Whenever we have, like any resident call me, I call them and they respond right away, which is amazing. I couldn't believe like how fast our SRT were able to respond like right away, within hour. And last but not least, I was invited to the Lunar New Year event for foster kids. And it was very nice, the organization did that. But at the same time, they want me to bring back to the resident that they're looking for adopted parents. And that's happened here, right here in Orange County. So they will come to our, our council meeting one of this day. But that's it for me, so.
Mayor Protam? Yeah, sorry. Really quick, indulge me for a second colleagues, I apologize. This is my first Valentine's Day as a married woman and I forgot to wish my husband a happy Valentine's Day. So it goes both ways. So happy Valentine's Day, honey.
Yeah, actually, with the last item, I was gonna say the happy Valentine to everyone. And just don't forget, right, the date. And I think that's it. If there are no other comments, I turned the meeting and the next regular meeting will be February 23rd at 5:30, or 6:30. Yeah. That's it.